August 14th to order, 2006, will you please stand to say the play of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you please call the roll? Councilmember Barnwell?
Here.
Calcone?
Here.
Horton?
Here.
House?
Schneider?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Mayor Bloom?
Here.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor, other than I think there's one presentation you're going to be making.
Yes, I think we'll do it at the beginning of public comment, which would be right now. Okay. You're the man, come on up. Let me turn on the... Look at that thing. I'm going to come on down.
All right. This is Conan Horton. My name's Bill Pintard, I'm the head coach of the Santa Barbara Foresters. And this is Conan Horton, and we brought... We went seven and oh. We had a unanimous vote. So we brought seven cats for all of you guys. Conan, Greg, and Tim. But Mayor, on behalf of the Santa Barbara Foresters, all our team and our coaches, we were so proud to represent Santa Barbara in the National Baseball Congress World Series. We didn't get it done last year, but we sure as hot got it done this year. And so this is our trophy, 2006 National Champions. Now, you can't keep that one, because that's gonna... But we do have something that all of our guys, after our game, we all signed a baseball. And this is signed by every player on our team and all our coaches. And that's for the city of Santa Barbara. And then we signed this banner, which is the 72nd NBC World Series. This has been going on since 1933. And the players that have played in this, everybody from Satchel Paige to Albert Pujols to Whitey Ford to Barry Bonds, there've been very many great teams that have played in there. And also, just for information, they took my jersey off right after the game. It's in the Wichita Hall of Fame. So that's... It's not mine, it's Santa Barbara's. And so there's that for you, Mayor. That would be great. And then one other thing, we kind of have a slogan. We brought you a shirt, Mayor, with Santa Barbara Foresters on the back. And our slogan is, "We bust ours to kick yours." And some people might think it's out of color, but that's just kind of the way we are.
I like that slogan.
And anyway, the thing else, also besides we won that national championship trophy on Thursday night, they awarded us the sportsmanship award. And we were very honored to receive that. And that has to do with that work that we do with the Hugs for Cubs. And so we were very honored to get the sportsmanship award.
Well, I feel surprised for you. No, it's not an "uh-oh." It's a good one. We are so proud of you and all you do for Hugs for Cubs. And we know that that makes a big difference. But also, to win a national championship from little Santa Barbara, and we don't even have a stadium. But I've got a letter of recognition right here for the Santa Barbara Foresters. It says, "Santa Barbara Foresters semi-pro baseball team founded in 1955 has long coveted the ultimate win and trophy bestowed by the National Baseball Congress. Under the infectious leadership of team coach Bill Pintard, for the past 13 years, the Foresters enjoy wide community support from fans and boosters alike, beyond the borders of Caesar Usaka Stadium at UCSB and the city of Santa Barbara. While earning a chance to bask in the national win after two near misses in 2003 and 2005, the Foresters and friends will enjoy reliving plays, bittersweet and otherwise, for many years to come. Santa Barbara Foresters teams, from the present to the past, distinguish themselves and support the interests of the city of Santa Barbara in fostering goodwill. So I, as Mayor of Santa Barbara, hereby recognize the Santa Barbara Foresters for realizing their dreams on Saturday, August 12th, 2006, and for taking along the many who came before them." Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach.
Thank you very much. Like I said, I didn't... I got ahead of myself, but we are very proud to represent this great city and this great area. And we wear it with dignity and pride. And thank you very much.
And you know, it's not easy when you have to ride on a bus for 27 hours.
Well, it was 37 hours on the way out. We did not have air conditioning. We took a wrong turn.
Oh, gee.
We gutted it out coming home. It took us 24 hours. We had air conditioning, and we didn't stop. And when we got to the Pacific... When we got to 126 and we hit the Pacific Coach, we opened up all the windows and we let that sea breeze in. And so it was awesome.
There you go. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming by.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
That's over here.
Yes.
If I could add a couple of things, your comment about the stadium. I just wanted Mr. Pintard and the team to know that the city's still working on making a stadium down there, a ballpark, now a stadium down at Pershing Park. And Paul Casey and other people in the Community Development Department are trying to get all the chess pieces to work together. As we all are sitting up here, listening to the name of the team is the Santa Barbara Foresters, and you're not even in Santa Barbara. That's gotta be corrected. And I just want you to know that the entire council is working on that. Mr. Williams just leaned over to me and said, "When are we going to get him a ballpark?" So it just takes time, but congratulations. Did you actually have to play a game at 4:30 in the morning, like the newspaper said? Because I've played some weird games, but I never played at 4:30 in the morning.
We played four games after midnight. We finished one game at 3:23. We finished another game at 4 o'clock. There's rain back there. See, I was quoting the Wichita papers. They were talking about our adjustment with the pitching. And I said, "Well, we don't have rain in California." And some of those people in Kansas thought I was pretty kind of cocky, you know? But it was that we had rain, so our pitcher couldn't go back out there. That's what I was talking about. But yeah, there were some rain delays, so we had to play at those hours. But play we did, and play hard we did. And I tell you what, we would love nothing more than to play in Santa Barbara and at Pershing. And whatever we can do to help that, we will help that. But thanks again.
Great. And congratulations to the Usakas, who actually did... They are the home to the team, so not to steal from the Usaka Stadium at all.
Well, Paul Usaka's a member of our board. Back there, David Pintard, my little brother, who's a member of our board. We even have an umpire here today. Usually, we argue with umpires, but Mike Hano, he does all that. And back there is a little redheaded fellow you might recognize. He's been my mentor for years.
Yep.
Coach Fairley. And he's... I rest you fairly, so...
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks again. We'll get out of here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we have a number of speakers. Bob Hanson will be followed by Teresa. Teresa didn't give a last name. There we go. See that song?
That's a hard act to follow.
It is, isn't it?
But he was on TV the other day, and he was saying the Foresters won. That's great. But you know what? Life is really what we want to win in. And I think, Santa Barbara, we need to be a community, and we need to work together. And we're a tourist town, and we have retirement and all the other things. I guess there was an ocean report just recently that came down, saying that our county has a lot of polluted ocean water. The flood in 1994, we had many days that were closed. I think it was almost 100 or something like that. And that could scare tourists away. So what happened? They kind of mixed it together, now warning closure. And really, a warning does mean the beach is closed by the mouth of the creeks, but they don't really say that. We only have a few closures now. The same amount of pollution that's out there. So I think that's kind of sad that that somehow happened. And we need to get back to the old ways of saying, "It's closed," you know? This beach, this area around the creek mouth, when it's polluted, we should tell everyone it's closed, instead of just warning and kind of pretending. Still, down in the Milfis area, there's no porta potties for the homeless. A lot of homeless people down there. One solution could be... Because there's no real problems in the world. There's a lot of solutions we can come up with. I think John Lennon might have said that. One of them could be just opening that bathroom that's down at the end of Milfis, down by Rainbow Park, two hours early in the morning. That could help. Because it's not just urinating, people are going to bathroom, you know? And that's really sad that that's happening, and we're letting it happen. The shelter keeps saying, "Oh, they can't handle it." But that was one of the conditional use permits, to have that shelter down there. And I think we need to have that happening. And during Fiesta, there was no signs telling people that we had like 20 porta potties out in that parking lot. That's disgraceful, that we don't tell people we have all those porta potties that are running around. And I only have a few seconds left. We bring out porta potties and stick them downtown for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. This town is so busy, seven days a week. Those need to be there all the time until other restrooms get built in that area. That's the real problem, the bar scene. And have signings telling people where those are at. Thank you very much. People are getting tickets, a lot of tickets for, you know, going to bathroom and stuff. And there could be some signs on State Street. You've seen what other tourist towns... We are a great tourist town. And I'm wrapping it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa followed by Jack Ruski.
Mayor Bloom, council members. I'm here to talk about the...
You need to give your name first.
Oh, sorry. My name's Teresa Bachi. I'm here to talk about the Oriental Fruit Fly program that's occurring right now. First of all, I'd like to say that the... I can appreciate what the CDFAs does in protecting agriculture. And I appreciate that. My concern is with regards to the pesticide that is currently being applied for bait treatment. I've been scrambling and doing some reading and came across the USDA Fruit Fly Cooperative Control Program, which is a final environmental impact statement. The USDA oversees the CDFAs. And in this environmental impact report, the basic conclusion was that they preferred an integrated program, which used non-chemical with chemical and/or... They also indicated in this program that, I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly, spinosad was effective in eradication of the Oriental Fruit Fly. And my question is, is why aren't we using spinosad if in fact it is effective in eradication? And that's what the CDFAs wants. And my other concern is, people in the community are experiencing symptoms. And what is the process? I mean, is there something in place for... Is there a hotline for people to call and get answers or give them directions? My understanding within this document, there should be an emergency plan in place. And I'm just wondering what the emergency plan is, so that people can be made aware of if they are experiencing symptoms and what to do. And again, I would just like to see safe alternatives for eradication.
Okay. Thank you. Just so everybody knows, I have Jack Ruski next, followed by Estelle Foster. Just so everybody knows, the... We're not spraying a... An email went out, said we're spraying, and we're not doing it. It's the county that is applying this to trees. And I think people who are here know that. And the county does it because the state tells them to. It's a mandated program. So there's nothing that the county or the city can do, except to say, "Hey, don't do that," which, you know, we can do. But it's up to the state, so the state program... And I think where it lies for us is with our legislator, probably the best thing that we can do. So, anyway, Jack Ruski is to be followed by... Who did I say? Estelle Foster.
Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate this opportunity to say a few comments about the fruit fly. In fact, your comment just leads into where I'm going to go in the next few minutes. First of all, I should introduce myself. I'm a local farmer. I'm an attorney. And I'm also a candidate for the upcoming election on the Board of Directors of the Gleana Water District. I'm here in all three capacities, because my concerns cut across the lines. There are, as I say, two immediate problems. One, there must be an elimination of the fruit fly as soon as possible. And number two, there has to be the protection of the public safety, which falls within your jurisdiction. I'm mindful of the fact that the city has no jurisdiction concerning the actual eradication program. But there is a moral duty to do everything possible to protect the health impact on the citizens. There should be efforts by the city to use its resources to notify in a direct fashion the public in the affected areas of the schedule for treatment. The area's not that extensive. And it's really a secret process, that if more people knew about, they could take certain precautions. The council, I would urge, to set up a protocol with the state to receive prompt, direct notification of when there was going to be such a program instituted, so that, again, you could be at the front of the curve and notify people as to the upcoming events that are going to be instituted by the state. There also should be an effort to join with other political units
10 seconds.
in the county to coordinate, because it's not going to stop at the city's line. So the city should pass some resolutions to implement information, coordination, and prevention, if possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Estelle Foster to be followed by Greg Chidick.
Hello. Ms. Foster.
Mayor Bloom and council and audience, television audience. I want to say to people who are listening firstly, to go to www.organifestival.com for further information on what is happening with this poison spray. You know, there's so many points to cover. And the 65 people who were out in front really were enlightened and had wonderful comments and questions. The problem is that the city at large, the community at large, has not been notified. I want to update everyone by telling you that not only was the Hope Ranch Annex inundated with this application, this splattering of dibromnailid, which is the highest category toxicity, but also Hidden Valley and the area from Cathedral Oaks to the Ocean, from San Marcos to Las Bacitas. It was said that, when we finally did get the information... I understand you, Marty, Mayor Bloom, and council and supervisors and even the Health Department were not pre-notified. So my point is, there wasn't proper pre-notification. Secondly, it was kind of misleading, because what was told was there would be a dime-sized dollop applied, when in fact, there was a large flapjack-sized splattering, which was observed by... Fortunately, or we wouldn't even be here, people wouldn't even know why they were falling down sick. This large flapjack kind of circle, which splattered on either side. I'm presuming it went to the ground, because things don't go up. It dripped down the tree. It was... It's told by Ambac, the manufacturer, that this product should not be used in residential areas.
Could you wind up, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you wind up?
Oh, my, already? Yeah, just winding up.
That's what you're doing.
So, anyway, there is so much more. Please do access Organifestival.com. You can contact me via email. And we'll be glad to provide further information. Someone from Hope Ranch just called me today and said her whole digestive system shut down. A woman in Hope Ranch Annex has been vomiting for four days. Other people are having respiratory problems. This is not figments of imaginations, and it is not coincidental. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Greg Chidick. And the last speaker will be Nancy Black. Hi, Greg.
Mayor Bloom, members of the City Council. My name is Greg Chidick. I've been working with IPM in the city for a while. I understand that we don't have jurisdiction here. However, the City Council has taken action in the form of resolutions on things that are of state or national or international interest before. And there are two things that concern me here. One is the notification issue, is that nobody knew that this was happening. The California Code of Regulation specifies that if you're going to be doing an aerial application, spraying from a plane, that you have to notify every single household with flyers and such. This can be done in aerial or at the discretion of the Ag Commissioner. I think it would make sense to request, for all future applications, that the Ag Commissioner notify in a manner according to the Code of Regulations, as well as the fact that we should be utilizing the least toxic materials. There are other materials that are being used by the state Ag Department in San Diego, for example. And those materials should be more fully developed and utilized on a first basis. Those two important points, notification and utilizing the least toxics, are in line with what we've been doing in this city. And requesting that of our state, if not federal government, I think is reasonable. Thank you.
Is there any recognition, do you know, by the state of the fact that it's an urban area, not an ag area? Or is that just not... Well, actually, okay.
It's my understanding, Mayor, that it's possible that they would have gotten a waiver, an SLN, I think it's called. We haven't been able to find that out. I just want to say one other quick word, that even though this is state mandated, that we in Santa Barbara have come too far with the 39 parks pesticide-free, our IPM management, your standing up against the Iraq War and the Patriot Act. We... It is not mandated what protocol should be used. And it is the very best scientists who have advised us that there is a much better protocol, and this never should have been done in Santa Barbara.
It's funny, you just came to zero on Greg's time. So that worked. That was just fine. Nancy Black will be the last speaker. And then we have no other speaker slips.
Hi, I'm Nancy Black. I'm the board president of Pesticide Awareness and Alternatives Coalition. And I'm a local journalist and a mother. I'm very active in my school community. And one of my primary concerns is that there are 30 schools, daycare facilities, and uncounted elder care facilities in the zone that's being applied. And you know, this... It will be applied during school sessions. The next three applications are scheduled while the kids are in school. And that's a vital concern to me. I have other members of school communities emailing us for information on, you know, what should we do with the kids. So we're scrambling for information. We'll pass it on as quick as we get it. And we'll be talking to Pedro and the other representatives, state representatives. But we request, and we know we can count on your partnership on this issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that's... We have no other requests to speak. Let me get this there. Mr. Barnwell?
I know this isn't on the agenda, and I don't want to get into a discussion on it, but could you tell me what it is that we're doing as a city?
What are we doing?
In response to this?
We attended meetings at the agriculture... That many of these people did. So that we're aware of it. We asked them for more notification. And that's what we've had assurances that we would get. You see Nancy Rapp's in the back there.
Do we know the future application program that we're now told is going to be near schools and things? Is that also something that we know?
There's an area that they're... And they're not spraying, they're applying it, but there's an area, yeah.
Well, and I've corresponded with the State Department of Ag. It specifically requested whether they entertained using other alternatives and why they didn't. And they just weren't willing to even get back to us. I'm not sure what the procedure is for this, Madam Mayor, but I have a personal friend who was affected by this, severe stomach cramps, headache, et cetera, without knowing that this stuff was on the tree in her front yard. And then she found out it was on the tree in the front yard. And so it wasn't one of the, you know, after-the-fact kind of whiner-complainer things. It was legitimate illness. Now, we have a provision in our codes and procedures for this council to make emergency proclamations and enactments that don't necessarily follow our normal procedure of, you know, announcements, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't make a very, very strong statement at some point in the very near future? Because I don't think it's appropriate for this stuff to continue at this agenda next to schools on whatever the timetable is. It just... Somehow, we have to...
Madam Mayor?
Sure.
Estelle Foster? Just a point of order, this is not on our agenda, but I would like to maybe make a motion, maybe get a second, to put this on the agenda in the not-too-distant future to discuss getting some sort of strong statement. I'm not quite sure what form that takes, a letter or some other documentary form. But it takes two of us to put something on the agenda. And so I will go ahead and make that motion here now, if that's the will of this board.
Is there a second?
Sure, there's a second. But I think...
Mr. Wiley?
I did have a point of order. Isn't our procedure that we have to make a written request? To put that on the agenda with two people?
I'm happy to follow this up with a written request.
My question to Mr. Wiley, very plainly, is, is that a proper motion? Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor, I believe it is. I believe the council's procedure, number one, does recognize the ability to do this as part of the public comment. Brown Act also allows it, by the way. But our own... Your own council procedures provide, I believe, for a follow-up with a written request.
Right.
As I said, I'm happy to follow up.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. And there'll be a follow-up then. We are on to the consent calendar, and we need to take a couple of... You need to read one, right? Yes. Number five. By title only. What, what? Oh, councilmember... We must not have gone anywhere. Nobody's... No. We did. Ms. Schneider, did you have a councilman... You were the committee report?
Yes, I do, actually. And also, right.
Okay.
First off, I did send an email to all of you on the council. But for those who were watching last week's council meeting, I just want to report that the California Coastal Commission last Friday voted unanimously in our favor for a federal coastal consistency determination finding for the Lower Mission Creek Army Corps Flood Control Project. And I was down at the Coastal Commission meeting along with Jill Zachary and Pat Kelly. And I want to extend huge kudos to Pat Kelly especially, and also to Jill Zachary, who worked with EDC and the Army Corps of Engineers and the county flood control in terms of making that meeting on Friday a very smooth one. It took longer to get there and back than for the meeting itself, which was fine. We like short meetings like that. But that's really the first step, as we talked about last week, in order to get... To start getting the funding we need to get this project going. So that's some good news to report. Also, last week was the second meeting of... I'm the representative from the city along to the school district's recycling committee, Ed France and our Environmental Services Department staffs that, and trying to figure out how the city and the school district can work together in terms of reducing... Well, increasing recycling in the school districts. They've already, through one meeting, as I think was mentioned before, saved the school district $10,000 a month, just by making a few phone calls and changing how the haulers pick up trash during the summer months. So that was worth the meeting in and of itself. Our staff is going to go to each campus and look at how each campus works in terms of picking up the trash and recycling it, and what services are needed, what tools are missing that need to be provided in terms of haulers or dumpsters or trashcans or whatever. So I think that's really exciting to see that happen as the school year starts. And then finally, the mayor and I met with Ginny Brush just this past week on a number of arts-related items, just things coming up in September, including Off Access, which is a tribute to contemporary art. But also, on the 10th, on Sunday, the 10th, there'll be a memorial for Ray Strong, who recently passed at the age of 101, be at 2 o'clock at the Sunken Gardens. And he was a pillar in our community with the Oak Group and for a lot of open space protection and using art as a way to, you know, bring that message forward. So I hope many of us can attend that memorial service on the 10th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Well, last week, the mayor and I attended the anniversary of SHIFCO celebration. And we had lunch with a number of senior residents of our great facility down there, along Cliff Drive. SHIFCO is an interfaith housing authority project that's been around for three decades. And that was a great event. Also yesterday, as liaisons under the youth council, I joined some of our youth council members with service learning workshops down at Carpentry High for school teachers, school administrators, and for some students. And specifically, the... Really, the subject matter was on how policies can either promote or be a barrier to service learning, that is, you know, getting people involved in community service and public participation and civic participation in our schools.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a meeting of our Sustainable Cities Council Subcommittee last week. Mayor Bloom and Ms. Schneider are on it with myself. And we laid out the plan of action for the next few months, which is to implement a variety of things, both program-oriented projects that will be completed, as well as policy documents that will begin to mandate that the city of Santa Barbara become as environmentally conscious in all of its actions as it's possibly, humanly possible to do. So it will be in the purchasing of the minor things, pencils and papers, So it will be in the purchasing of the minor things, pencils and papers, all the way up to the purchasing of automobiles and trucks, it'll be the use of electricity, the use of gas, the use of water, and then possible ways not only to save in the consumption of them, but the city may be able to generate some of these energies like electricity or natural gas, and reduce the cost to the city for our daily operations. It's very exciting, we're going to have a council report probably in the next couple, three months, where we'll update the general public on it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Falconi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a brief report that the Armory Subcommittee of the Park Board met last week, and we had a very complete discussion, some things are, of where we've been, and where we are, and where we're going, and some things are possible still, some things are not possible, but we are going to be forwarding this to the Park Board, and just to let folks know that this project is, has still got momentum, and we're still working toward it, so I don't want anybody to think that it's just sort of died and slipped off into some black hole someplace. It is alive and well, it's just that, as Mr. Barnwell said about the stadium, things take time, and this is a huge project that will also take time, but it's still alive, so thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, now consent calendar, and you can go ahead and read number five by title only.
Item number five, introduction of ordinance for assignment of lease agreement number 20453, Deli Sushi Gogo, including recommendation B, that council introduced and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving an assignment of lease agreement number 20453 from David Kim and Waljo Kim, doing business as Deli Sushi Gogo, to Kyung Wang and Sarah Wang, for the 198 square-foot restaurant located at 119B Harbor Way, commencing on September 22nd, 2006.
Okay, thank you, that's reading by title only. Without further objection, we'll waive further reading.
Just wanted to take off number two, Madam Mayor.
Okay, take off number two, and you need to take off.
I need to abstain from number four and seven, I live nearby.
Okay, so we'll vote on those separately first, let me just, okay, go ahead and read number two.
Item number two, designation of deputy city clerk.
Okay, Ms. Falconi.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce our new clerk, Lori Cole, who is sitting here, and Brenda is sitting next to her, but I just wanted to take a formal, a formal welcome, so glad to see you.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome, Lori. Madam Mayor, I would like to move items four and seven.
Okay, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
And one abstention.
And I would like to then move the balance of the consent calendar.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, you're good, thank you, Mr. Barnwell. You just moved it right along. Okay, we are on item 11. You'll go ahead and read that, Lori.
Item 11, capital improvement projects, fourth quarter, and annual report for fiscal year 2006.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Kelly, you're short, how'd that happen? It's like the chair went down or something, I just hate that, there, oh, phew.
Pat Kelly, Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer, Madam Mayor and Council Members, have a presentation today to go over the fourth quarter of our capital program, and also summary of, an annual summary of our capital program, and at the very end, I have a video that we worked with Tony Ruggeri on, focusing on Granada Garage, which was our largest capital project we completed last year. Before moving on to some more details, some of the highlights for the year included the completion of the Granada Garage, I mentioned, also the start of the Royal Borough Creek rehabilitation, right at the end of Velasquez Cita, so I suggest you drive down there, it's quite a change from what had been there before, talk about that a little bit later. And then plus, we had a record year in completing construction, we completed $31 million in construction contracts, and that translates to over, or approximately $37 million in total project value, when you include the cost of design and construction management. And that's the largest we've had since I've been here, and that I've found on record. And just to give you a highlight, is that next year, we anticipate that it'd even be more, because we have the completion of Sheffield Reservoir coming up and some other large projects. In particular, some of the projects that will be seen being completed this next year will include several projects out at the airport, which is in progress now, we have the Sheffield Reservoir still in progress, and so like, right now, we have $62 million in projects in progress. This last year, this last quarter, we completed two, and that added up to $22 million in construction costs of the 31 I mentioned, and we had 11 other projects in prior quarters. Go over some projects in progress, this is the Royal Borough Project, it has some interesting features. We had some rain on, may recall, on Fiesta, as a matter of fact, and so we had some urban runoff, and the project already began to provide an opportunity to slow down the water and allow the sediment to settle out before it gets into the estuary, which is one of the key features of the project. Other key features include the removal of a 300-foot culvert, and replacement with an open channel. Now, that open channel will have a bridge across it, so the, so the access from the community over to the Douglas Family Preserve will be kept. After this construction, there'll be a significant amount of revegetation. A key feature of the project also includes making a modification to the, underneath the bridge at Royal Borough at Cliff Drive, to enhance the ability of fish passage. This is the State Street restroom that is in the Paseo to the Libero Parking Lot, and this is from the stairs from that parking lot, and the theater, and, and Borders Bookstore. It's anticipated to be completed next, next month. Here's another big Creeks project, Creeks project, that is scheduled to be completed before winter, and what this does, it takes the urban runoff from the West Side Storm Drain, runs it through a filter and UV before our ultraviolet treatment to clean it before it's an outlet into the drain again, and then into Bonnet Park, and the old Mission Creek, Old Mission Creek. Here we are at a good old bread and butter project that we have in town, the water main replacement, we also have similar projects for sewer main. This project in particular is replacing 32,000 linear feet of pipeline, this represents approximately 2% of the city's system, waterline system, and it uses two years of funding as part of the waterline replacement program. And following this is that we'll have a similar sewer project to follow up as part of maintaining our infrastructure and, and the best water quality to our residents. Now, here's a project that'll be hard to miss in the near future, this is the Area A Slurry Seal, which Area A is the downtown, or the central part of the city, so you'll be seeing it in some of the streets around us, and this year, we get the Slurry Seal State Street and all the other streets nearby, so we're taking significant precautions of working with the downtown businesses, and we believe we have a system that will be a minimum inconvenience to the public, and if it's not, I know we'll find out about it. But we are certainly wanting to do our best, so we don't find out about it.
That improves my confidence about leaps and bounds.
But this is an essential element of, you know, keeping our, keeping the potholes away, and good clear running for our buses, bicycles, and of course, cars. And now moving from work in construction in progress to move to a significant amount of work, of design in progress. You can see, we have 46 projects, these are projects engineering actively is working on now. For your information, there's a couple other projects that are in progress, like for example, the Art Redevelopment Agency is working on the development of some projects, including the West Cabrillo sidewalks, and so we're not directly involved in that now, but we provide support as requested, but eventually that will be moving into the system also. So this is not just all the work that we're doing, the city has a lot of projects in progress. One in particular is out at the airport, now this is one project as part of many projects to increase the airfield safety. This is one of the first steps to provide an area to expand the, a site to expand the safety area for the runway, and then once the reconstruction is done of the, of the creek, to relocate it over here, then this site can be cleared for the, the safety area for planes, and then the runway can be relocated next year. There are other significant projects out at the airport, you can't talk about the airport without talking about the terminal, and this is an exciting project, and for on several different levels. One is to meet all the design parameters of a new facility that meets the Santa Barbara experience, as well as meet the budget. And I believe you received recent information from the airport director that gives us some new opportunities to be able to, to achieve that. One of the key features of the new terminal will be also green construction elements, and I think with these new developments and the design, in the preliminary and conceptual design, I believe we will be able to do that better. This is a neighborhood project that came out of the Neighborhood Task Force, and is being funded by our Community Development Block Grants, which you're looking over here on the left, is a recently completed sidewalk and curb and gutter on Punta Gorda, down near at the very bottom of the Sycamore Creek watershed, and then on the right here is the south side of the street, and just on the other side of this trailer park is the freeway. And so you can see, is this isn't really very neighborhood friendly, and the plan is to use our Community Development Block Grant funds to match new curb and gutter and sidewalk on this side also, so we're quite happy with that. This is a little slide of our Cabrillo Bridge replacement, I think I, we've been to council on a conceptual design contract here, and the development last Friday at Coastal Commission will be a big assistance for moving this project forward, because even though the bridge is not within the Lower Mission Creek project, the features, in order to build the bridge, will be impacting the, the channel upstream of the bridge, which is in the project, and then some of the environmental features of the Lower Mission Creek project will probably be implemented as part of the construction of new wing walls for this bridge. While we're talking about this bridge, is that it is funded through Federal Highway Administration 88% grant, and we also have two other projects, two other bridges that we are moving forward on at Ortega Street and Haley de la Vina, using the same grant program. One of the things that's going to be affecting us in the future is the increase in costs that California has informed us on, that they understand that some of the bridges have had significant cost increases in the last couple of years, and it's going to affect them more, because they're on the 88% end of the grant, however, and then we'll be incorporating any changes into our future capital programs. But this, it will be a challenge to move forward on these, but it's quite a good grant to have, you know, these types of projects 88% funded. Now, here's a grant project that we're very happy with, because it's 100% funded, and what it provides, at this cross-section, shows at the freeway underpass on, on Mission Street at Highway 101, over here is the existing curb, this little bump here, and it's like we have 10-foot wide sidewalks, or close to 10-foot, underneath the freeway, and what we're working on is putting in a bike path underneath the freeway, and then having a slightly shorter sidewalk. Now then, when we get past the railroad bridge and the freeway bridge, then we will widen the sidewalk again, and what that will require is, you know, building hopefully short retaining walls to provide for that wider sidewalk, and then all intents at this point is also to put in street trees to make it a little bit more of a pleasing pedestrian environment. Now, here is a walk down memory lane, so to speak, is that many of these projects you've seen, there are 13 different projects, I have some photos of each, starting with Granada Garage, and just see before and afters. Here's the old Lot 6, and a recent picture of the entrance of Granada Garage, that was a construction value of, you know, or rather, construction contract at 21.5 million dollars. Ortega Park Expansion, this was a nice project that we worked with Parks and Recreation on, this is a general fund project, that helps with the drop-off and improve safety at the Santa Barbara Junior High School. And here's some bread and butter down at Alastero, just some needed maintenance of $400,000, there's significant other projects in progress right now. And here's a project that was mostly funded via a federal grant through Congresswoman CAPS Office to improve the pedestrian feel of the bridge over the freeway at Ortega. And here's some night construction, some of the large capital work that we do that's never seen, here's $2 million to work on the runway out at the airport. The project went very smooth, and probably most people don't know that it was done. It was repaving the street, rather, repaving the runway, and then putting perpendicular grooves in the pavement in order to have appropriate drainage off the runway. Here's another airport project, significant elements, all wrapped in to the safety area grading, where they're doing some tidal restoration demonstrations. I understand the airport department will be bringing to council a presentation of all the, or at least via Inside Santa Barbara, all the efforts that the city's doing regarding the Galleta Slough. And here's some sidewalks on Upper State Street, where we worked with, experimented with several different materials to overcome some pedestrian challenges here. We used both rubberized panels, and also permeable concrete as an idea to minimize future tree root intrusion on the sidewalks. And here is some, you know, a street that had been wanting repair for some time, but we had a waterline project, so we held off on overlaying until the waterline project was done, and the neighbors were, for the most part, patient for us to move through, and now I think they're pretty happy that they have a new street. And here again is just some improvements that are necessary to keep the facility running out at the airport. This is the remodel out of the, are we doing it again? Out at the waterfront offices. Here's a project we're pretty proud of, at Pueblo Street, we did a very quick repair, emergency repair, and we just got the check from Caltrans to pay for this emergency repair. And here again is the Slurry Seal at Mountain Drive, sidewalk infill. And right now, I have a presentation, a video presentation, if there's not any questions, or we can hold them to the end.
There aren't any questions that I see. We're ready for a movie. Where's the popcorn? Oh, video.
This parking lot, parking lot 6 behind the Granada Theater, will be just a memory. In its place will be the Granada Garage, a five-level parking structure which will nearly triple the number of parking spaces from 210 to 575. Looking northwest up Anacapa Street from Annapamoo, the parking structure/architecture will blend in with its surroundings.
In this area, no parking's been built since Richard Nixon was president.
Merchants surrounding Lot 6, like bookseller Eric Kelly, say a larger parking lot is way overdue. However, the last thing they can afford is for construction to interfere with two consecutive holiday shopping seasons. And with that ceremonial turning of the dirt, the first parking expansion project north of Correo Street since the Nixon administration was underway. For nearly 15 years, merchants from Correo to Victoria Streets have been fighting the effects of the Paseo Nuevo Mall. And when people did work their way north of Correo to shop or attend the theater...
There was always a demand, and a heavy demand on this lot, and there weren't enough parking spaces to really go around.
At a design and construction cost of nearly $25 million, the parking lot holding 210 parking spaces will be transformed into a five-level parking structure with a capacity to hold 570 cars. That's because there will be two levels underground and three levels above grade. The Granada Garage, as it's being called, will complement the refurbishing next door of the Granada Theater, and the overall attempts to make this part of town the cultural arts center.
So, if you have an event, you can pre-sell tickets, get them all up to a level, and then dump that level out when you're done with the event, and it works out real fast and real easy on everyone. Instead of having to travel by every single car that you go by, you'll go into it, and you'll find your space, and be able to get out very quickly.
Well, I think it's something that they can point to with confidence, that there'll be parking available, when they say, "Well, come on down, and I have parking that's relatively close to my business." Many times during the work weekend, on weekends, this lot is full.
This is the front facade of the parking structure, which will run along Anacapa Street. Much of what architects have drawn and work crews will construct are the concepts of the late streets and parking manager George Girth.
On many of these issues, we've got one interest versus another. The best that we can hope for is that we all keep an open mind to developing what is the best solution for the community.
Before Girth died in 2003 of a heart attack, he championed this project by making it one of his top priorities.
George was a visionary, and I- he would know that what we're going to get is real, it's going to be a beautiful addition to this part of town, and I'm sure he would have a catchy little saying, but I wouldn't want to speak for him. He was a terrific man, and he believed in this project, and was our champion.
And as George wanted it, the project will impact only one Christmas for merchants north of Correo, this Christmas.
That's good news, considering 55 days of work were postponed on the new Granada Garage parking structure due to rain delays.
Right now, they're pouring the decks or the elevated parking structure. It's the concrete, the heavy work that's going on right now.
The project is also incorporating green building practices to make it environmentally friendly. These include a conduit system for future solar panels on the roof, as well as the installation of an extensive stormwater filtration system that will ensure clean water runoff to our ocean. Fly ash was also added to the concrete throughout the structure. Using fly ash reduces pollution, saves landfill space, and reduces fuel consumption necessary to produce competing products such as cement. The downtown organization is excited that the nearly 215,000-square-foot structure is on target to open right when they need it most, the holiday season. The city project went into high gear this summer. Construction takes place six days a week to help make up for lost time. The goal is to ensure the garage is ready to open by the end of November.
When the Granada Garage is complete, it will have 572 parking spaces. And it will offer some bonus features for drivers, like the ability to see as you enter the structure how many spaces are available on each level.
This is a time lapse of the construction that I showed about a year ago, and we're wrapping up the final end of it. This was taken by a cam off the roof of the county building.
It took over 20 years to begin, but only 21 months to complete. With 570 spaces, the new Granada Garage will provide much-needed parking in downtown. Located on the corner of Annapamoo and Anacapa Streets, the lot also houses new offices for the Downtown Parking and Environmental Services Programs.
Another unique feature of the Granada Garage is the vehicle counting system, which shows how many spaces are available on each level, or if the levels are full.
The garage also features a speed ramp that lets drivers go directly to the level with available spaces.
It allows the drivers to go to each level without the need to go by every parking space first.
And for those who are looking for alternate ways to get to work, the garage features a secure bike station where you can not only park your bike, but repair it as well.
Bike station will hold 80 bikes, and has a shower and a bathroom, so there's no excuse now not to ride your bike to work.
These features help make the Granada Garage the most efficient parking lot in the city, and some even argue that it is the most attractive parking lot anywhere.
Well, when you think of parking structure, you wouldn't think of this building. And I think that makes it feel real wonderful to me, in that it just blends really in with where the courthouse is and the library, both beautiful buildings, and then this building. I'm very proud of the way it looks.
It'll just really add so much. When people come to town, they'll be able to park close to their events. They'll be able to use the restaurants that are right around here. The library and the art museum are directly across the street. And the county courthouse is right here. It just couldn't be in a, you know, in a better, more convenient spot.
The garage is now fully open, but only the Anacapa Street entrance will be accessible until the Granada Theater construction is completed in 2007. The Granada Garage project has already received a variety of accolades. The project won two awards from the American Public Works Association, including the grand prize for Project of the Year. The structure also won the American Society of Civil Engineers Project of the Year Award in February.
And that's it? And if you have any questions, I'd be very pleased to answer them.
Oh, it's very good. Thank you. Mr. Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations, Public Works. Bravo. That's- it's nice to see all that stuff. And I just want to also congratulate Henry Lenny, who was the architect of that thing, if I remember correctly. He did a, what everyone thought was an outstanding job, and it turned out it was. I have some specific questions, if I may. The Mission under- Mission Sidewalk, Mission Street Underpass Sidewalk, it came in front of the council, and we talked about some variations on the theme of the sidewalk, a widening area, maybe putting in a concrete bench, et cetera. Your reference to it talked about being outside of the boundaries of both the freeway bridge and the railroad bridge, where you were widening the sidewalk, and yet there's space between those two bridges as well. What are this? Are there going to be some concrete benches built into that retaining wall? Will there be a widening where it's available, rather than just outside the perimeter of the two bridges?
Councilmember Barnwell, the widening outside the perimeter of the bridges is where the opportunity is given to us, and so we'll take advantage of that. So, we're following that suggestion to widen the sidewalk where we can. Regarding benches, that's something we'll be working with ABR on, as far as adding that as a design feature.
Well, I want to encourage you. I think you got encouragement from the council last time, so whatever you can do in that regard, to doll that up and make it look like something other than just some industrial underpass. But I'm glad it's moving forward. I know that all the people that ride around town in chairs are really looking forward to some kind of curb cuts, although there are none. Brings me to my second question. You showed a photograph of some curb cuts, I think it was on maybe Chino Street, and there were two curb cuts at right angles to one another at the radius turn of the sidewalk, rather than one curb cut in the middle of that radius.
Correct.
Do we- do we have a protocol that decides which way we go, and is that more expensive than the other way? Or could you just give a little background on why we make those decisions?
Yes, Councilmember Barnwell, is that that was one of the first two-way sidewalk, or two-way ramps that we had built, and it came out of a suggestion from, I think it was Dan Burton, one of our pedestrian consultants that we used extensively in the pedestrian master plan. And the suggestion was, is that it makes the pedestrian experience easier if you have a direct line, rather than have a single ramp, so to speak. And yes, they are approximately twice as expensive. The recommendation as to which way to go comes from our transportation staff as to which they prefer, and, you know, based on, are there no, for example, one situation could be is that if there's an existing single ramp at an intersection, what we'd probably, and they're- and they meet reasonable standards, we'd probably just match that. Of course, we would, you know, run it through, many times we have to run this through our access committee. However, if we're in a neighborhood and there are no ramps, we'll probably go with the dual
Does this ever go by the TCC, or for that matter, the ABR or the HLC? And the reason I ask the question, it may sound nitpicky, but those look awful busy to me, as opposed to the original way we were doing them. They don't look visually as attractive, and if they're costing twice as much, if we haven't had complaints from the ADA community, or people who are in chairs, then if there's an internal way to save money, I wonder why we're doing it. I mean, Dan Burton's a great guy, but I don't know that he has that much juice with the city that he gets to tell us how we design our sidewalks. So, I'm wondering, what is the contrary view? And does it- does it have any ballast?
Well, this is a new idea that we're, with our client, our Transportation Pioneering Division, have been working with, and it's certainly something we can bring, I'll bring back to them, and bring it to their attention, is that, you know, to check to make sure that it is vetted through the TCC and the other appropriate...
And the reason I ask that the TCC look at it is that, because I am not familiar anymore with, and I don't know any council members are closely familiar with, the budget associated with transportation and circulation, as the TCC is. And if it goes back to them, and they see these numbers that may be saved for other projects that might have a higher priority, then I think they might be in line to go ahead and at least assist in the making of that decision. So, I just, if that's what I'd like to say. And then, my last question, actually, it's a comment, is I took a walk around town, and I took the Annapamoo Street Bridge last night, from the west side to the downtown, and there are five light bulbs out, and it gets pretty dark on the stretch, particularly from the center line of the freeway toward downtown. So, I would just like to tell you that we need to put in some more light bulbs there. Thanks, Madam Mayor, and also thanks for all the good work. I don't want any of my remarks here to- for you to think that I don't think you're doing a great job.
Mayor Bloom and Councilmember Barnwell, is that on the city streets that the lights are out?
No, it's on the overpass. It's on the pedestrian overpass. There's about maybe seven or eight light standards on that overpass, and there are five that are black.
And I can report back at our next quarterly report, because we usually are building some sidewalks somewhere in town, and report to you, back to you about the access ramps. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ms. Falcone, and Mr. Williams.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Public Works for all of the work. You know, it's really heartening to see so much being done in the public infrastructures. That is one of the fundamental duties of any government, that we really are paying attention to the roads and the sidewalks, and making the public infrastructure the best that we possibly can. It's really critical that we choose to spend our money that way, but also that we are able to leverage. I know that you do a great job, and the Creeks Division does a great job in leveraging that money. Wish we could do it in other sectors as well. I have one quick little question, and it's a small and forgotten little project, but when you were doing one of the Creeks projects, it reminded me, what has become of the little bikeway in Pershing Park?
That's a long story.
It's a long story. I do- I realize that, Madam Mayor, but it's sort of a forgotten little story, and I don't want to go into it now. I'm just wondering, has that slipped off into the abyss, or is it still somewhere on some table?
It is, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Falcone, is that it has not slipped off the table, because as a matter of fact, I just confirmed with Caltrans that it is an active project. As a matter of fact, it's a grant project, and I could report back at the next quarter report as exactly where that is and on the table.
That would be great, because the connectivity that that provides between that area of the west side and the entire harbor area is, would be so useful for people of all sorts. So, I'd love to hear a progress report on that. Thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
I had a question on three projects. One is if the notice of completion, if you're expecting to have a notice of completion for the Sheffield Reservoir Project in September, when will the park that's going to be there on top of the reservoir be open to the public?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Williams, the park, I'll have to report back to you on that regarding the, what the Parks and Recreation will be able to do. I think right now, it is in a warranty period for the landscaping, and so if it's not open at this time, it's probably waiting for that, and I can send a note to the council and yourself regarding when that will be.
Great. And then, the second one was Fire Station 1 remodel, which you mentioned at the end of the year report. I'm just wondering if you can give us any kind of a preview as to what's on the table for that? I'm specifically interested in whether a roof replacement is going to be a part of it, or if that's not in the scope, if that's not needed at this time.
Councilmember Williams, regarding Fire Station Number 1?
Yeah.
That is a redevelopment agency project over, I think we have over $4 million in funding to solve a host of problems there. One of them is crowding of the fire, the firemen there and firewomen, and...
Firefighters.
Firefighters.
Nice catch.
I've known some firewomen.
I wasn't going to miss that.
No, you didn't. It's good.
And it's quite a challenging project, because there are needs there, structural needs for the building itself, as well as remodeling needs, and to make that fit within budget is quite a challenge. And so, we're working closely with the new fire chief, Ron Prince, and the rest of his staff to get that to work. And we just awarded a conceptual design contract, and we're meeting biweekly to do our best to move that forward as quickly as possible. But there's a lot of challenges there to meet the budget.
And then, the last one was the one project I haven't seen on this, but maybe it's in there somewheres. Didn't either Parks and Rec or the waterfront do some work on the, what's known in the harbor as the Beer Can Channel, that opens up into the harbor and goes along through Pershing Park, and tends to be a source of pollutants, both small and large?
Councilmember Williams, I'm not familiar with a project there. I'm familiar with the site, and that might just be a maintenance project of the waterfront.
Cleanup.
Cleanup. Cleanup, so the only thing is cleanup at the outflow, not any kind of device? I just know that they were trying to do something about it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
I remember John Bradley saying that was just a maintenance project. I can't really remember. Okay. Thank you. Could you please read item number, thank you, Mr. Kelly, 12 and 13? Take them together.
Item number 12, conference with labor negotiator, police, and item number 13, conference with legal counsel, pending litigation.
Okay, both are closed sessions, and we'll adjourn from that session. We won't report back here. Okay. Thank you very much.